We'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners regular meeting to order, please. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk would take the roll, please.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian?
Commissioner Heideman?
Here.
Commissioner Bone?
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Are there any additions or deletions or changes to the agenda? Hearing none?
I would move the approval of the agenda as presented.
Support? Motion support, discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion. Minutes of the previous meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve and file the minutes of the 10/20/2016 Commission Meeting, the 11/3/2016 Joint Board of Commissioners, and Park and Recreation Commission Meeting, and the 11/03/2016 Standing Committee Meetings.
Support? I have a motion to support. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? I don't believe we have any proclamations tonight on the consent agenda items A through L.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve items 7A through 7L on the consent agenda.
Support? I have a motion to support. Is there anything in that agenda that somebody would like pulled out and discussed? If not, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Reports of standing and special committees. We'll start down at the end there with Commissioner McConnell.
I don't really have any. We're still working on the, with central dispatch on the 800 megahertz. I know the fire chiefs had a meeting and talked about, you know, what the cost is going to be for them, and of course, you know, there's a few that are unhappy that there's going to be any cost, and a few of them think it's pretty reasonable. So, it's just the way that we're going, right? We need to go to the 800 megahertz. It's the most economical, it's the best use of the radios. They all agree that the radios are going to be more useful for them because they're going to have inter-talk groups where now they don't. Right now, it's just a paging system. It's still going to be used as a paging system, but it's going to allow them to have better communication from their radios to their other radios, and everybody else doesn't have to hear it. So, they're going to be able to know who's en route and which trucks are where, without going through dispatch and having dispatch put it back out on the open airways where it's, you know, congestion for everybody, so.
I've talked to some of those firefighters, and I'm getting the same feeling you are, that they feel that in the long run, it's going to be the better way to go. They're just kind of balking at the change, and somebody told me, and Howard can attest to this because he and I were both teachers, that the worst group from, teachers resisted change more than anybody except firefighters, so.
Well, they're, yeah, in the back of the room, they're all, I think they're, they know it's going to be good, but up front, it's just a, especially the ones that just bought radios, you know, new pagers in the last year or two, and they, you know, they're wishing they wouldn't have, but if we knew the system would last, then we wouldn't worry about it, but we're concerned at our level of it failing, and it's non-replaceable, some of the items we have in the current systems.
Very good. Thank you.
Just a comment about that. We replaced, that we put in the towers, in 800 megahertz radios, what, 15, maybe 12, 13 years ago.
Yes.
These are the pagers now that are replacing, and putting those on 802, which gives them more abilities, as you pointed out.
Oh, yes.
And, yeah, I think in terms of public safety, definitely.
It's the best thing overall.
Good.
Craig, just one comment or question, I guess. Are there any municipalities already on the 800 megahertz, or is this a whole new complete system?
There are two, Saginaw and Traverse City areas are on the 800.
Okay.
Right. A lot of people using the 800, but not the fire departments. They're using the 800 radios throughout the state, but the pagers are only in.
Saginaw and Traverse City area.
At this time.
Thank you.
And they did visit there and talk to them, and they're working very well and without problems.
Good. Commissioner Heideman?
Metropolitan Planning Met, and I would like to report that the requests from local municipalities and townships to assist in developing their plans, there were, I think, three or four requests from townships and cities, and that bodes well for the kind of work that our planning commission's been doing.
Very good. Commissioner Rushing?
Two things. Same thing with the master plan, but this is for Riley. We completed ours. It's been forwarded to the metro planning, and we'll be getting it back from the county, and at that time, we're going to send it out for public hearing for Riley Township. So, we completed the joint partnership with the county for that. And our planning commissioner will also be addressing two medical marijuana dispensaries within Riley Township that are Monday night, and I'll let you know how that goes next month.
Thank you. Commissioner Dunn?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight. The only thing that I wanted to mention is that you're going to start seeing the library coming out a little bit more now, and I say that because next year is their 100th anniversary, and they're just now beginning. You may have seen some of it in some of the newspaper articles a few places. It's beginning to come out, and they're going to be looking for input from the citizens and the users of that library system in the county. If you're going to have some ideas on things you'd like to see, some changes you might like to see, or some ways that you think they could celebrate the 100 years that they have been a library in St. Clair County, certainly get with your local library or get with the main library branch and let them know, so. All right? Good enough. Citizens wishing to address the board, I have a list of about six people that would like to speak tonight. Just very quickly, let me remind you that you all have three minutes to speak. Our technician will set the red clock at the back at three minutes, which will kind of help you stay on task and get your message to us. I know you want to get the whole message to us. Howard Heideman is our sergeant-at-arms. He'll remind you at 30 seconds just that you have that much time remaining, and then when you're done, we'll call the next person to come up there. So, if that works with everybody, let's get started then with Carol Miller. I think you were the first one here, Carol, so I get, you get first spot.
This is her first time at a county Board of Commissioner meeting.
It is, and she was a little bit nervous, but she's settling down nicely.
Thank you for having me here, and thank you, everybody, for coming out and supporting. Good evening. My name is Carol Miller. I've been a resident of St. Clair County for 53 of 55 years. What began as a simple question turned into a journey for change. I never expected that I would have so much love and support behind my efforts to make the journey what it has become. What sparked this movement is that I wanted to know how I could foster or adopt an older dog that nobody wanted at animal control. The mannerism in which I was spoken to on the telephone floored me. It was unprofessional, cold, and something I never expected. It also happened to me in person earlier in the year. What started as a small group has turned into over 450 members in 38 days. This includes all walks of life, veterinarians, shelters, rescues, mom and dads, your citizens that care about the welfare of our animals and the care they should receive, and they are not. Our animal control, as I'm sure you may know, has a very bad reputation in our own community, and not to mention in the neighboring counties. Why is that? If you looked at the factual data from previous meetings that you were given, you would see our kill rate is unspeakable. Yet, we see very few adoptable animals. Who makes the decisions to allow the adoption or to pass the animal on to either a rescue pull or to death? There is, from what I was told, one volunteer who is only allowed to walk the dogs. There's no socialization for other animals. Imagine sitting in a small room with no interactions, no minimal touch from a human for days. Imagine having an infection or an injury, and no professional to take care of you, no medicine given to those that need it. Decisions on care and well-being of an animal are not always made by a veterinarian. How can that be? I am a nurse, and in my world, that is practicing medicine without a license. On a side note, something that truly bothers me to this day is that our group was told that there's only one dog in the adoption area. That's horrible, totally horrible. With all the animals on the pull list are being euthanized, I can't imagine what happens to the others. We need to have a director placed over animal control to make it run efficiently and financially responsible to get the care the animals are needing. A director that cares for the animals and wants the adoption rate to soar and the euthanasia rate to fall. A director that looks at all the grants and funding opportunities that have been offered yet never sought after. A director that will allow veterinarians who want to come, offer their time for the betterment of the animals, and to teach the public. There are so many opportunities here that are being lost. Our group would like to change the facility into a welcome and loving place where the citizens who want to and can volunteer, rather than being turned away while our inmates are allowed to rule the area. You will hear only a few stories tonight. We would like the board to look at our group, look at where animal control stands, give our group the opportunity to make changes that are much needed, and for you to make the animal control a place your citizens can be proud of, not ashamed of. How sad it is to be told how horrible our animal control is. As a dog owner and a taxpayer, I'm appalled at how things are run. We need change. We need a director. We need you to partner with us to make it happen. At this time, I'd like to thank you again for letting me speak, and I hope that you allow us to partner with you, as well as the Sheriff Department, to make things much better for the animals, and thank you, everybody, for all your love and care for helping the animals. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.[652.29][652.29][applause] Courtney Protz Sanders?
Good evening, Commissioners.
Evening.
Courtney Protz Sanders. I'm a resident of Oakland County, but as I've been here before you before, I am here in a professional capacity. I'm a board trustee for Michigan's Political Action Committee for Animals. We're a statewide bipartisan PAC that helps communities develop pet-friendly, animal-friendly, animal welfare ordinances, resolutions, and, in most cases, also help their shelter improve and do better and raise their live release rate. So, we've been meeting with St. Clair County residents for a long time now, collecting their complaints and talking to them about what it is they want to see changed, not only at the shelter, but within animal control and the structure. We've given you our proposal to address those concerns in the 10 programs that we'd like to see incorporated into the shelter, and I'm pleased to report that a week ago today, I attended a meeting with the undersheriff and Captain Paulus and the office manager, Stephanie, from the shelter, along with a group of your residents and other animal welfare experts. And I thought the meeting was very productive. I thought it was positive, and I thought it was very educational on both sides. I've been doing this while this coming January will be 17 years, and I have never seen a shelter operate without a shelter director. And I think that, right now, they're being asked to do the impossible, because a shelter needs a director, and an office manager should be able to do office managing. I asked a few basic questions, just to kind of get a better idea of some of the shelter processes, such as, what is your license compliance rate in the county? Because licensing is revenue for you guys, and dog owners should be licensing their dogs. They didn't know the answer to that. I asked, what is the capacity for care at our shelter? What is the length of stay? And they didn't know the answers to that. That's concerning, but like I said, I also feel like there's no possible way they can succeed with the current setup. I asked if the current vet has shelter medicine, training, and experience certification, and the office manager answered yes, immediately, no hesitation. The answer is no. He doesn't, and that's not surprising. Finding a shelter medicine vet can be difficult in Michigan. What bothered me was the very quick response, that she didn't understand the question. And it's not a personal attack. I think the hearts are in the right place and intent is good, but they're operating understaffed, under-resourced, and underfunded. We've looked at the budget, and there is money to allocate toward hiring a shelter director. It would alleviate a lot of the stress, and it would allow for these programs to be developed and incorporated the way that they should and the way that your residents really want to see them. One of the other shocking things.
Excuse me, you have 30 seconds.
Thank you. The other thing that surprised me was, we were told that the shelter is not a shelter, and it is not a humane society, and I think that's where one of your huge disconnects with your residents lies, because they do want it to be a shelter, and they do want it to be an animal care and control facility. So, we are here to ask you to work with us, and we'd love to help you work on allocating the budget that's needed to help the shelter succeed, because you've got, they've got the passion, and you really do have the resources once the process is in place. Thank you.
Thank you very much.[852.22][852.22][applause] In the IT office, have we got that clock working?
I've got to figure this out.[863.43][863.43][laughter]
Okay. Shavina Hernandez?
Yeah. Killed it.[875.31][875.31][laughter]
Hi, everyone. This is my first Commissioners meeting, too, and I don't do well in public, so please bear with me. I just, my name is Shavina Hernandez, resident of Clyde Township. I have lived in St. Clair County now for a little over six years. I moved up here from Macomb County area where I grew up. In July, June and July of 2015, I had quite a nightmarish experience with St. Clair County Sheriff Animal Control. I lost my cat, Opie. He ran out of the house when I lived in Port Huron, and instantly, the first thing we did was call the St. Clair County Sheriff Animal Control. We went down there the next day to give them a photo and a description of the animal. The office manager, who I thought was the shelter manager, took the photo and made sure she said she was going to contact me. She stated to me to come back every Friday to check for him, that she would call me in case anything came in. I went every Friday for almost a month. The young lady at the desk, the other young lady at the desk stated to ask me why I come in every Friday, and I told her because she told me to. And she said, you need to come in more often. She says, we euthanize every four days if your cat didn't have a collar, and that Stephanie Ignisch, the director, or the manager at the time, knew that, and I told her that right away. I was appalled, four days without a collar and seven days with a collar. I asked at that time, after a month of coming, if they had any record of cats they put down in case mine got put down accidentally, and they said, they only have intake photos, and at that moment, Stephanie Ignisch walked in. They had intake photos, and that they would, they don't have the time to look them up for me, to see if my cat got put down. I was upset. I was crying. We were still very professional. They were still very nice to me, but very stern on the fact that they would not look up anything to try to help me to see if they had put down my cat. Within a few days of that, I went, I started going every single day. Within a few days of that, I took, I went every single day for almost seven months after that. I asked the young lady and Stephanie Ignisch at the front if I could volunteer to take photos of the cats. I had seen, coming in on a Monday, there were 30 cats in there, two and three crammed into a cage, some laying in their own vomit, some laying in their own feces, so sick that they couldn't move. I asked if I could take photos to help them find their homes.
Excuse me, you have 30 seconds for closing.
And they told me, no, they weren't, they would not allow it. I spoke to Stephanie Ignisch and a few others and showed her documentation from the state of California stating that it was law that I could take photos, and she said she didn't want to see it. She wanted to, she ran her facility the way she wanted to. I actually went to Captain Muckslow and tried to file a complaint. He says, we don't do it that way. He talked to Stephanie Ignisch, and then he stood and said that he would stick with her decision, that she runs her shelter her way. So, I just wanted to share my experience with that.
Thank you for sharing with us.[1075.65][1075.65][applause] Michelle Chisnell?
Hi. Good evening. My name is Michelle Chisnell. I am a resident of Macomb County, and I am also a rescuer and a fosterer. On October 12th, I came and I picked up an unknown dog named, unnamed dog, that we named Stella. On the ride home, she vomited profusely. I attributed at that time to maybe car sickness, nervousness, anything like that. She increasingly, over the night, got sicker and sicker, and she was only eight months old. And so, the next morning around 11 o'clock, I brought her to the vet. They gave her some anti-nausea medicine, and they gave me some medicine to give her at home. On the 13th, she increasingly vomited diarrhea profusely all over, and she started to wobble and not be able to stand. On the 14th, I took her outside. I had to carry her at this point, and she stood for a second and fell right over. I called the vet immediately, and around 2 o'clock, we brought her into the vet. She had to be put on IVs. She was given 12-hour critical time of where it could go either way. I took her home because I did not want her to pass away in another shelter. I did not want her to be in a hospital. I wanted her to be able to feel love for perhaps the first time in her life. So, I took her into my home, and I wrapped her up in warm blankets and warm water, and by quarter to 7:00 that evening, she passed away. This should never happen. This should have been a healthy animal that was only released to a rescue person, and within 48 hours, they passed away. The vet told me that this was most definitely poisoning. Now, she never ate in my home. She never drank in my home. I syrenged some water into her mouth and syrenged some chicken broth for her to get some nourishment. I am asking, please, can you please increase your budget to allow a director to come in so no other lives are lost like Stella's? I'm here to represent her and any other animals like her. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.[1221.14][1221.14][applause] Sheri McCollum?
Hi there. My name is Sheri McCollum, and I'm from Birchville. I've lived in St. Clair County the majority of my life. First thing, I had a dog a while back that broke out of its yard. A person was nice enough to take it out to animal control. First day, I called that he was gone and was told there was no such dog. Second day, I called, was handled pretty rudely. Third day, I went out, and I kind of, I did get demanding. I stomped my foot and said, I'd really like to go look at the cages. Well, I'll be damned if he wasn't there. He had a cough. He didn't have a cough when he ran away. Took him to the vet, and ended up, he was diagnosed with kennel cough. He has since passed away. He was treated and so on, but he got kennel cough, if I'm guessing from there. Second thing is, I was just recently told by my friend of vet that you all are changing the licensing for animal control, the dog licensing, and it's going to be an online system, and there's going to only be a few townships and dog control that will be able to handle that. I know for a fact, I have family members, that ours don't match up with the township ours and don't match up with animal controls. They always buy their licenses at their vets, because they go to like evening visits. A lot of veterinarians around here, some of them are open until 9:00 at night, some even open at 6:00 in the morning. If you're driving down to Detroit, you know, you leave at 7:00 a.m. and you don't get home until 7:00 at night, guess what? You're not going to hit any of those places. So, you're going to lose a lot of revenue there, and you're already complaining that you don't have enough staff. I'm not sure when an actual dog survey or consensus or census was done in the community. You know, they're saying they don't have volunteers, they don't have people to do it, so I think you need to look at that as well. I think you may end up losing a lot of money that way as well, which may be the money that could pay for the director or pay for more people to work out there. And my heart's divided. I happen to know an officer that works out there very well. I've known him since he was a wee little boy. It's a very hard job. If he could get another position, he would, but he's kind of stuck. So, let's do something. Let's make us proud of it again, you know? At one time, our dog pound wasn't this curse.
Excuse me, you have 30 seconds.
And that's what it's become. No one can say anything nice about it. So, let's see what we can do. Let's use the volunteers that are readily helping with other animal welfare organizations. We'll help with them, too. Let's see. Thank you.
Thank you.[1399.97][1399.97][applause] Dr. Karen Michalski?
Hi. My name is Dr. Karen Michalski. I moved into the area a little over a year ago, and that was about when I became involved in helping the St. Clair animal control situation. It was brought to my attention through another rescue organization. I'm a veterinarian and own my own practice in Sterling Heights, Michigan. I also run a shelter, a licensed Michigan shelter, and a rescue. I rescue a lot of animals from all over the world, and also started getting involved in this. I was told at the time that all the rescues were listed on the St. Clair list of what animals were available for rescues. I was not on the list. None of the people I know in southeast Michigan were on the list that are also involved in rescue. So, I got on the list, and I have been helping ever since. The problems that I have run into with these animals is that I had, I had found out that this was such a super high-kill shelter. I had wondered why they'd never asked for help, even from me, being another shelter in the near area. I, once I got involved, started offering multiple, multiple times to help, to volunteer, to come in and do spays and neuters, to come in and treat the animals at my cost, no cost to the county, and was told, no, that was not possible. I offered to help with the recent situation with the Buhans. I am very, very much experienced in dealing with hoarding situations, having dealt with others before, and I had offered my help on that as well, and once again, was turned down. I think that one of the things that I have noticed is that these animals are coming out of this shelter in such horrible condition. I take in cats from other shelters. None of them come in this sick. I mean, they are deathly ill, and I know a lot of the rescues have had these animals die. We have had some of these cats in the, in our hospital, in our isolation ward, for two weeks.
Doctor, you'll have to make your closing remarks within the next 30 seconds.
On breathing treatments, on variety of different antibiotics. All in all, I have spent more than $11,000 on these cats, trying to get them healthy in order to be adopted, and they all have been adoptable, and they all have been adopted, except the ones we currently have. I do want to bring to note that according to the County Animal Ordinance Number 7, which says, "Failure to provide reasonable wellness care or other curative measures to eliminate or minimize suffering when the animal is in pain or distress," is not being followed by this shelter. And decisions are being made by the technician, which are not decisions that the city, the county, or the state recognizes should be made by a technician, and that is considered practicing veterinary medicine without a license. I think that needs to be changed.
Thank you.[1624.76][1624.76][applause] Normally, we just move on at this point to the next thing, but I just want to make a quick comment that we are listening to you. I have spoken to all of the board members. The two that aren't here, I've spoken with them. We've already had meetings with administration, the sheriff, the undersheriff. I know that you guys have had a meeting with the animal control people and the sheriff, and let you know that we are going to continue to move forward in this, to try to make this what you think it should be, what everybody thinks it should be, to try to make it a better shelter, what it is. And I thank you very much for coming today. Okay.[1672.24][1672.24][applause] Unfinished business. I don't believe we have anything. I'm just going to say this very quickly. If you would like to stay, we're going to run through the rest of the meeting. If you would like to leave, you're certainly free to leave. We move through our meetings rather quickly. Our business has all been done at the committee level, and we kind of go through this at this point rather quickly, so you're welcome to stay or you're welcome to leave, whichever you'd like to do. All right. Item 11A is the approval of county disbursements, please.
At this time, I'd like to move to approve the county disbursements for October 2016 in the amount of $38,587,688.82.
Support? Okay. I have a motion to support. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody? Oh, I'm sorry. Let's do a roll call. Sorry.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop?
Yes. Item B, the Health Department staff development?
Mr. Chairman, I had moved to approve the Health Department request to close at noon on December 9, 2016, for staff development.
Support? Okay. We have a motion to support. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody? Oh, I'm sorry. Let's do a roll call. Sorry.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop?
Yes. Item B, the Health Department staff development?
Mr. Chairman, I had moved to approve the Health Department request to close at noon on December 9, 2016, for staff development.
Support? Okay. We have a motion to support. Any discussion on the Health Department staff development?
Aye.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. 11C is the Fiscal Year 2017 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program Contract.
Chairman Greathop, I move to approve the 2017 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program Agreement in the amount of $211,800.
Support? Okay. I have a motion to support. Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hyattman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes. Item D, 2017 to 2021 Capital Improvement Program.
This time, I'd like to move to approve 2017 to 2021 Capital Improvement Program.
Support.
Motion to support on the Capital Improvement Program. Any discussion? Howard, do you have anything you need to add to that? I think we've all been through it a couple of times.
Yeah, I, no, I do not have.
Okay. Hearing nothing, then. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Item E, Resolution 1634 County At-Large Drain Assessments.
Mr. Chairman, I had moved to adopt Resolution 16-34 relative to annual county at-large drain assessments.
Support.
Motion to support. Any discussion?
Do we want to put a number with that?
1634?
Yes.
What they?
Do we need to?
Okay. We have a motion to support?
We do.
Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Hyattman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes. Item E is, or F rather, is the Resolution 1640 Adoption of the St. Clair County Master Plan.
Mr. Chair, I move to the adoption of Resolution 1640, adopting the St. Clair County Master Plan.
Support.
Motion to support. Howard, is there anything you want to say on that one?
No.
All right. Anybody else? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Item G is Survey and Remonumentation Grant 2017.
This time, I'd like to move to approve the 2017 Survey and Remonumentation Grant Application in the amount of $74,752.
Support.
Motion to support. Any questions on that? Pretty straightforward stuff. Okay, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, that's a roll call, isn't it? All right, roll call it, guys.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Hyattman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes. Item H is the Wetland Boardwalk Professional Services Agreement.
I'd move to approve the Wetland Boardwalk Professional Service Agreement with PM below in the amount not to exceed $25,830.
Support.
Motion to support. Any questions or discussion on that one?
If you get a chance to go down and do the River Walk, you're going to see a lot of changes there within the next year. So, it's going to be an exciting addition to the River Walk here in Fort Huron.
Is there any blacktop put down there? Has that been talked about?
That's, that's not.
That's not part of our project. I know, but I just didn't know.
It would be nice.
It's so rough down there.
I understand.
I understand.
I understand that they are working on restrooms in some form. They're talking about it at least.
Yeah.
Okay, I know that was one of yours' things. All right. Anything else on that? Roll call, please.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Hyattman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes. Item I, Temporary Assignment Detective.
I would make a motion to approve the request, the request to temporarily change the deputy sheriff position assigned to DSEMIIC to the rank of detective, contingent upon continued grant funding.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a support. I was a little concerned about it, and I read through it and I talked to somebody. Should that funding end at some point, this particular individual would then go back to the rank that he had at this particular time, so.
That's what I thought.
Yep.
During committee.
And the grant's picking up his additional fee.
Oh, excellent.
So.
It was already cleared through the union and everything, so that if there's a problem, that would be taken care of.
Okay. Anything else on that issue? Aye? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Item J, the Extreme Shreds Agreement Addendum.
This time, I'd like to move to approve the Extreme Shreds Agreement Addendum in an amount not to exceed $16,000 through 10/31 of 2018.
Support.
Okay, anybody want to try to say that again? Nobody wants to talk about it, do they? All right. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hyattman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes. Item K, the Purchase of Property 6651 Smith Creek Road in Kimball.
Mr. Chair, I, I move to adopt Resolution 16-41, approving the purchase of property at 6651 Smith Creek Road in the amount of $275,000.
Support.
6651, 6651, in the amount of what?
$275,000.
Oh, I must have messed up.
1641.
I've got 665. 6651 Smith Creek, I got it $130,000.
No, I probably, I must have messed up the dollar amount.
The resolution numbers are... No, it's right.
No, I might.
We have to get that right.
It is $130,000.
It is in the resolution.
It is $130,000?
Yes.
Okay, so, the motion was at 6651 Smith Creek in the amount of $130,000, correct?
That's correct.
All right, we do have a motion.
Support.
And a, and a support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Hyattman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes. Item L, Purchase of Property 6609 Smith Creek Road.
Okay, I've got L and I've got 6639. Is that what you said?
6, 6609.
Okay, mine says 39.
Well, that's the other one. There's another one there.
I, I have that one. But, I, I'm not too comfortable with the price point.
We'll cover you. Go ahead.
We'll cover it. Go ahead, Duke.
Okay, I move to adopt Resolution 16-42, approving the purchase of the property at 6639 Smith Creek Road in the amount.
That's item M. Let's hold off on that one.
Mine says L.
Then I screwed up the resolution numbers on the motions.
Okay. All right, let's do 6609 first. Whoever's got 6609.
Do it, Howard.
I got 6639.
All right, I'll, I'll make the motion then.
Hold it.
1641. It's Resolution 1641.
Okay, I, I think I just discovered the problem. I have two motions here for 6651, and they're different. So, I, I would move then the approval of the purchase of the property at 6609 Smith Creek Road, Smith Creek in the amount of $275,000.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll support.
And I have a support. Discussion on that one? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Hyattman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes. Item M, Purchase of Property 6639. Commissioner Dunn, I believe this one's yours.
I would move to adopt Resolution 16-42, approving the purchase of the property at 6639 Smith Creek Road in the amount of $160,000.
Support.
Okay, motion to support. Any discussion on that?
Just a little bit. We're just going to have all the, all this was typographical error that.
Yeah. The resolutions are all correct.
Okay.
And these are just generic purchase agreements, they're not generic. But I mean, the resolve from the closing and what will be done with the houses as far as occupancy, that's all going to be addressed in the final paperwork. Right? If it's immediate occupancy, if they're going to get three months to stay or four months or five months.
That, that's all in the purchase agreements attached on the agenda this evening.
And those are all final? I mean, those are all firm, firm?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, but on the other hand, if something comes up and the people need to stay longer, I, I don't think that's any issue with any of us.
Not an issue. Nope. Not an issue at all. Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Hyattman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Definitely.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes. That takes care of all of our new business. I just want to say that it may appear that we don't know what we're doing, but administration does, and that's what really counts when this is all said and done at the end of the day, is that they know what they're doing, that they do, so. Wait a minute, who said that? You're out of order. Sergeant Arms, remove that woman, please.
No, I think we need a little levity here.
All right. Administrator's report. Ms. Heftine, please.
On your consent agenda this evening, you'll see that the county was once again awarded with the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement on our 2015 financial statements. Just so you're aware, to produce a comprehensive financial statement to receive this award, it's actually a 109-page checklist of items that we must comply with in order to meet all of the different standards and criteria, and it's well above and beyond what the state of Michigan requires. However, it does provide additional data to residents and citizens to provide an easily readable and comprehensive financial report. A lot of hard work goes into this. Deana Alderice, our accounting manager, and Danielle Hazelwood, our staff accountant, put a ton of time and effort into compiling all of this data, so, thank you to them. Last Saturday, with a project in conjunction with DTE Foundation and Relief Michigan, we planted 16 trees here on the downtown campus. The majority of them are on the green space that was the old jail site. There was a group of volunteers here that morning that planted those trees, and several were also put in front of the library. So, if you drive by and see those trees, that was part of.
Was that DTE?
Yep, DTE Foundation and Relief Michigan.
Thank you.
It's a partnership. Brief update on our parking lot expansion up at the Blue Water Convention Center. Unfortunately, the asphalt plants are not going to stay open longer despite our unseasonably beautiful weather, so our improvements will actually have to get pushed back until the spring. You'll see some site work happening up there prior to the spring as much as we can, but the actual asphalting and final product won't be done until the spring. Last weekend, the Blue Water Convention Center hosted a, its first gun and knife show, and they had over 2,000 people came to that show over the weekend, so that was very successful for a first-time show. And this coming up weekend, they do have Shipshewana on the road that we expect to be just as successful, if not more. There's every available space that a booth can be for a vendor, all of the rooms, the large event hall, and the ballroom will be full of vendor and exhibit space. So, if you have a chance, we hope you can all come out and check out the event. Commissioner McConnell already touched on this, the fire paging system. I've been working with dispatch, dispatch director, and we hope that December or your first meeting in January, you'll see a proposal come to you for the replacement of our existing fire paging system to convert to the 800 megahertz system. We're just working on getting final pager counts that each individual municipality feels that they'll need. They have their existing counts, but they're going through and reviewing what they feel they'll need on the new system, and that's the final piece we're waiting for. Monday, your legislative, your normally scheduled legislative lunch is going to actually be a legislative priority session with strategic communications, so if you can please let administration know if you plan to attend the legislative session at noon, so we can...
Jeff asked if you could move it back to 12:30.
Oh, to 12:30?
Commissioner Bowman would like that moved to 12:30 if that's in agreement with everybody, instead of 12:00. So he can make it, he's at a blue meat screen meeting, so.
Yeah, there is a blue meat screen at the same time. Okay, and earlier this week, we are going through our bond refunding process, and we had a bond rating call with Standard and Poor's. It'll probably be not till the end of the month when we get our rating results on that, but once we get it, I'll let the board know. And that's it.
That's it? Any questions for administration? Commissioner Hyattman?
I just want to comment, back when we started on the Convention Center in 2011, so, I, I don't know how many commissioners that are still. I may be the only one here. You were here, and David. But one of the things that the, was presented in economic impact statement to us was that if there's a convention coming into town and they spend a night, the average conventioner spends $375. Well, with a little bit of math, that 2,000 conventioners brought almost $750,000 to this community last weekend. And now, we have another biggie coming. How much do they spend on advertising?
$35,000.
$35,000 advertising this event. So, it's crafts event, if I understand correctly.
Shipshewana?
Shipshewana.
Yeah, Shipshewana. It's, I don't know if you've ever been to the flea market down in, I think it's in Illinois or Indiana. It's basically, it's open in the summer, and that's their traveling.
Oh, okay.
They have many homemade goods, craft goods, Amish goods.
They're expecting a big turnout for that, too.
Yes.
So, the, these economic impacts are really starting to grow, and it's exciting to see it.
I'd like to share.
We've been open for a year.[1641.32]